We'll call the Tuesday, July 26, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
Chairman, I was going to recommend or request that we move the discussion item number one regarding the VMT setting to just right after the information and consent calendar, if at all possible, since we do have someone, we have someone on Zoom, and I know we have a few other discussion items, so I want, maybe some discussion items, we have two public hearings, so.
We'll move it up before the public hearings.
Yes.
Just that item.
Yep.
Yes, do we have consensus from the commission for that? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Helmer?
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Here.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Public comments under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. We didn't get any comments, anything? Okay, we'll move right along then. Information and consent calendar, there is one item, the approval of minutes from the March 22, 2022 meeting, if there's no need for discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve, does the motion have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chairman Jacobs made the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we will move along with the changes and discuss Planning Commission approval of Resolution 02P-006 recommending to the City Council adoption of the Fresno County SB 743 implementation, regional guidelines for vehicle miles traveled and setting 13% less VMT per capita than existing average VMT for Fresno County as a threshold for the city of Colinga.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick little just background, Senate Bill 743, which was signed in 2013, became effective in July, July 1, 2020, and those changes mandated the way transportation impacts are analyzed in California under the Environmental Quality Act. VMT has replaced level of service, for anyone that's familiar with level of service, you typically see that in older general plans, including ours, as the SEQA's transportation impact determination, so as level of service goes up, it just means that you have more congestion. The state now is moving towards a vehicle miles traveled analysis, and one of the challenges that we had is really trying to address VMT from a more of a rural perspective compared to the urban perspective, because in the urban center, it's a little bit easier to analyze and look at VMTs, because a lot of times people work and live in very, in close proximity, where in rural areas, you know, certain types of projects or certain folks drive longer distances, and so we're driving longer. We all know that we, we travel to Fresno, we travel to Hanford to shop, there's things, and so we really, Fresno COG and working through their circuit planning program, really looked at a VMT analysis that would be more effective for rural communities than smaller cities, per se. So, you know, you have the Fresnos and the Clovises and even potentially the Kermans, but then you've got all the other cities that are very small rural communities where this VMT change and this dynamic has really impacted these smaller communities. So Eric Von Berg's here with RINCON consultants who was hired by Fresno COG to do this analysis for the smaller cities, and we're now going through the process of the recommendations from the commission, to then approval by the council to set these per capita goals. So Eric, Eric had a short presentation, and then if you guys have any questions, we'd more than happen to answer anything, and then we'll move forward with the dop, recommending the adoption of the resolution. So Eric?
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Is the PowerPoint up, or am I just going to talk through it?
Oh, if you'd like, can you share, are you able to share your screen? Because you can do it if.
Okay.
If not, I did not give.
Let me try that. Okay. Where'd it go? Always takes up all my screens when I try to. Why don't I just talk through it? It's, it's mostly words on that. Well, let's see, let's try here.
There we go.
Can you see that? Okay, so, let me get to the first slide. So again, as Sean was pointing out, this was a discussion on the SEQA VMT thresholds to have the city of Colinga adopt these. We developed this program with the, well, here, I'll tell you, so this is what I'm going to discuss for you this evening, is just overview of the SB 743 and VMT, how it applies to SEQA and to your community, the benefits of adopting what we're proposing here, and also how it works. So what happened was the LOS is that level of service, so basically looking at congestion used to be the way we viewed transportation, and now we're looking at it, how many vehicle miles traveled. So, and this is in relationship to trying to reduce our amount of GHG emissions. And as well, there was the idea that sometimes SEQA punished projects that were infill projects because you would create more congestion in a downtown area or already built area, and you need, there wasn't ways to mitigate that, that congestion, and you didn't, so it actually favored new development on outskirts of town that has other issues involved with it. So that was sort of the premise behind the GH, switching from LOS to GHG. So this took place in 2020, is when, July 1, 2020, when it was supposed to be adopted or went into effect, and we're still in the process of getting these, getting this all approved. What we've proposed, what we've provided to the cities and what you're looking at tonight is this opportunity to streamline your SEQA process here for urban development within areas there, and, and also hopefully, you know, step-by-step process when, if the, if there are different issues going forth. So, and as well, this gives you more of an opportunity to go beyond SEQA in developing your own guidelines and help direct your, the development you want to see within your city. And that's what we do here, is so you get to identify the methodology to evaluate your VMT, SEQA, and then Fresno COG did a full analysis, and the state standard is 15% below the 1990 VMT standards. In this way, it's a 13% threshold, which is a lower threshold, which makes it easier for, for projects to, to meet the requirements. And then as well, what we're, we're doing is showing you how to implement the Fresno COG VMT guidelines and tools. So what we did is a step-by-step process, so the first stop is to see if you can exempt a project from SEQA in this, so if we can show that does not need to complete SEQA because it's exempt such as a by right use within your zoning district, then SEQA would not apply. And then as well, then step forward if there's a categorical exemption or statutory exemption, which then again exempts the project from SEQA. And then we do a screening process to identify if projects can be, we can show that they're have a less than significant VMT impact, and there's some guidelines in SEQA for doing that, which helps. So what we do is, is utilize the, this screening tool that Fresno COG has developed so that it's web-based, you go online and you can identify what they call transportation impact areas or assessment zones, or TAS, as they're referred to, to see if, if it's within that zone has a lower threshold or a, already meets the requirements for being that 13% reduction, depending on that type of project. So that'd be enough, the next level, if we can't find the project exempt from SEQA on that. And then this shows you again how, how it works when you zoom into a parcel data that showing here, like here where it's green, that it meets the 13% threshold, so therefore you can say the project is less than significant for transportation impacts in regards to VMT. Then there's the next process where they have a calculation tool that you go online and you put in the information on that project, and then it'll show you the level of, you know, if there is, if it is a less than significant level, or if there's additional issues involved with that. And then if there are potentially impacts to VMT, then it does provide for mitigation measures that can then reduce those impacts, and this shows you the percentage of VMT reduction you get with each of these types of mitigation measures. And I will point out Fresno COG is also working on a new program to develop additional mitigation measures, and it'll probably be like a mitigation fee program, which will allow you, if there is, if you do have potentially, potential impacts on VMT, that you can pay into this program that would then reduce your, your impacts to less than significant. And as well, it would, that, that funding that goes into that fee program would then pay for projects such as, you know, improving your trail, bicycle trail systems here in the city of Colinga and other parts of Fresno County and the cities. So that's still to come, that's just under, under work right now. So that just gives you that brief overview of, of what we're doing here, and so our recommendation is that you recommend to council to adopt resolution, a resolution adopting Fresno County SB 743 implementation regional guidelines and setting associated 13% threshold for the city, I'm sorry, typo there, city of Colinga vehicle miles traveled analysis with the SEQA Environmental Quality Act. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So let me get my head around this, how, how is a city going to monitor how many miles vehicles travel? Is there some type of assumption made on the population base that is going to then calculate some miles and see if it falls within the parameters of this bill?
Yeah, it's, it's that, there's, there's guidelines that you look at it at a project level basis, so that's the way SEQA operates. So project comes in, and there's certain, you know, certain things, like if it's a, like an infill development, you have a commercial development that's already surrounded by other commercial and residential, we can say that there's already traffic flowing there, it's not going to increase the level, you know, it's not going to make people travel farther to go to that development there, so therefore it would have a less than significant impact. And there's certain projects that you can say that have a less than 100 trips a day would, would be created, and that's considered a less than significant impact. I think it's 110 trips. So if you can say a project is not going to generate, is going to generate less than 110 trips, then it's considered a less than significant impact.
If you have a housing, housing development, let's say 50 brand-new homes, and maybe they all don't work in Colinga, maybe they travel to Fresno or to Visalia or Hanford or Lemoore, I mean, I mean, how do you, how do you, how does that all work together to come up with some type of criteria?
Well, that's when you would, we would hire a traffic engineer that would do a traffic impact study to, to assess that vehicle miles traveled, to see how that project, you know, what generation of VMT that, that would occur with that project there. And then there's, you know, standard performance measures they utilize to, to say that, you know, residential development's going to create, each house is going to create so many trips, and here's where the estimated, estimated endpoints where they're going to travel to and then generate that number there.
And the benefit to the city for, for passing this to the city council does what?
So what it does is currently, right now, the state standard, if nothing's been adopted, is that you, your threshold, you see what, you know, determines things, it's what's its level of significance, and so if it's less, if the level of significance is low, you know, it's not a significant impact, that, then, you know, you can approve that project. If there's actual significant impacts, then you have to go through other, other hoops or complete a environmental impact report. So what this does is it lowers that threshold from 15% reduction to a 13% reduction, so it's, it's an easier standard there. And as well, what we're doing through this process is just providing a, a process to do that, so that smaller projects can get through it, through your process much quicker and, you know, legally get through the SEQA process to have a less than significant impact.
Thank you.
Commissioner Helmer?
Actually speaking, what will the adoption of this standard do in terms of the workload of, for projects here in the city of Colinga?
I mean, we, we still analyze projects, obviously, at their face and whether or not, and it's really the, the first thing is, is it a project under SEQA, and are we going to have to go through a certain analysis? Now, the perfect example of kind of what we used, even though this was in draft form, the, you know, the VMT is still in effect in terms of how we look at traffic impacts. So when we did the, that senior housing Alzheimer's facility over there on Phelps, we went through this, we went and used COG's screening process to determine that that facility as a whole project was less than significant. So our environmental consultants went there. It's, it's, I mean, once you get to a point of whether you have like a mitigated negative declaration or go to the initial study phase, rather than you, rather than doing a notice of exemption, it's just a different process we have to go through. We're still in uncharted territory, and although, I mean, Eric will probably concur that, you know, there's still a lot of projects that are unknown in terms of what the overall impacts that VMT is going to have. The difficult part is, this is state legislation, and we're being forced to do it. It seems like we're always being forced to do something, right? And so I think with COG's effort and working with RINCON and developing of this methodology, there's, we're, we're going, we've gone, there's a easier screening process, there's a more, there's a, there's an easier list of like exempt projects that we can utilize to make it easier to make a determination, rather than funneling through all this state legislation and assume we know what they were, what their intent was. And so, and we also, you know, gained 2% in terms of the overall reduction of VMT from those, those previous levels. But yeah, I think housing, Chairman, you hit it on, I mean, Ken, you hit it on the nose, is, housing is one of the really big unknowns, especially in the rural areas, on terms of what the impacts of VMT is going to be. For most of our projects, we, I mean, a lot of it's infill exempt projects. You know me, I'm always trying to look for ways to exempt projects from SEQA, to move projects quicker, and not to waste money of applicants over things that aren't necessarily, are unnecessary, that, that can be found to be exempt. So a lot of infill projects, but when you start doing bigger greenfield projects, you know, 10-plus acres of land, new development, then you're going to start seeing this more. But it's just going to be a part of the SEQA process, you know, part of the traffic analysis, and they'll just be going through this tool. But COG has that tool where consultants can go and they can review, put in the number of units, where it's located, and have it spit out a result, and then if we get to that point where we have the new mitigation, that's where it gets a little hairy, but we're still working through that and how you can kind of reduce those, those. And then that's why COG, right now, we're working on a mitigation fee, where basically it's just another fee we have to charge to say, you know, we'll, we'll pay a fee to, to pay for the mitigation. And then there'll be larger, bigger mitigation regionally to address the impacts.
So to check my understanding, if I understand correctly, at least the intention or the idea in part behind this, besides complying with state law, is that it will be or should be an easier process both for city, the city to go through and for the applicants?
With, yes, I would not, I wouldn't say VMT is the easiest process, but with what COG is prepared.
There are benefits for?
It's making it easier for us to, to utilize and be able to interpret the VMT impacts, for sure, yes.
I, I would also add that adopting these thresholds, then the city has more legal protection than if somebody challenges your SEQA document, you say, here's our thresholds, this is what we adopt, and that's why we're processing it this way, and judges will give more deference to, to cities with those standards. The more you have written down and you're following that and you can point to that, then the more chances of winning are, you know, it's much more legally defensible.
And I just have one question about some language in the resolution itself. Because it's language that I haven't seen in any other of our resolutions, if I remember it correctly, and that's something along the lines of, we do this with independent, God, I just had it. If you have a question, why don't you go ahead?
Oh, yeah, the now four thereof resolved using their independent judgment?
Yes.
Okay. I think, see, because a lot of times these, these resolutions have been kind of repeated and basically provided to, to the city as templates to use, I think it's just language that other jurisdictions use, or, I think, I think it came from, was it, did it come from COG, that these, this resolution, Eric?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, I think a template, we might have provided some from another jurisdiction as well.
And I just wondered if that was particular to this, because it was a template, you know, with group effort, or if that's language we're going to anticipate seeing in all of our resolutions?
No, I don't normally use that in the resolutions, I think it just came in as a template, so we kind of just went through it and adjust as necessary.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Piggybacking on Commissioner Helmer's last point, what other jurisdictions are looking at adopting what we're considering right now?
Eric can probably answer, I think it's almost all the small cities, right?
We've, we've provided this to all the small cities, and that's what this Fresno COG Circuit Planning and Engineering Program is, is for, is for the 13 small cities. City of Kerman has adopted it, City of Selma is looking at it, they were ones that requested it, and I've provided it to the city of Huron right now. City of Ridley has, they had adopted thresholds, you know, a year or two ago, but those were utilized in the 15% reduction, so they're, they're looking at adopting this as well. So those are the ones that I'm, that have contacted me, and City of San Joaquin as well.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Yeah, just, is this a yearly contract we have?
No, this was, so Fresno COG, as you, as you know, is our regional transportation authority, Fresno Council of Governments, they get federal funds and they run what they call a circuit planner program or circuit engineering program, where they'll take on special projects, where they'll hire engineering firms or planning firms to do special projects that really help regionally, local, small, a lot of times small communities. I've had them, I mean, I think Eric's actually helped me draft a RFP for one of our engineering, or for one of our environmental consult and consulting contracts for one of our trail projects. And so basically, they're, they, they do a circuit program and they say, hey, what can we help you with? And one of the things that was brought up, and I, I think it was Selma that brought this up, was to develop this threshold for small communities, because I can, I can tell you even from a staff perspective, this VMT is very overwhelming. It's a lot for a small community to undertake, and when you have somebody that's, that basically, when they do it under the circuit planner program, they're taking on, and they're basically creating something that all agencies can use. Now, sometimes it's good things, just like with our ATP, they're doing, you know, we have our active transportation plan, we did ours on our own, because we got, we got funding from the state to do it. Well, under their program, the Fresno COG is going to do a regional ATP. Well, I asked them, I said, hey, you know, we have our own, we're really proud of what we have, we've been able to implement a lot of it with our trail and with all of our crosswalks and safety enhancements, can we update our existing plan and keep it? And they said yes. So we're actually going to undertake free of charge, our, do a five-year update on our ATP through the circuit planner program, but be part of the regional ATP, but we're going to be able to update our, our own ATP, and then we'll have that re-adopted to freshen it up a little bit. So those are some of the things that they do, so there's no cost to us. I mean, I mean, basically Fresno COG receives federal funds, that's where we get a lot of our street funds, they funnel a lot of that fund through, so they provide a lot of services to the, especially to the smaller communities, where it's very difficult because all staffing. all staffing levels in small communities, you know, are challenging. So there's consulting firms out there like RENCON and other placeworks that really do a lot of work with COG to help on these, you know, little, little projects that really benefit all the, all the cities.
So, Eric, how long have you been working with Sean?
Let's see, I taught him to ski about three years ago. Actually, it's probably about eight years ago, when I was still at the county of Fresno, and we were working on the, the dual conditional use permits for the grant, granite mine.
So that granite expansion that we did, he originally worked for Fresno County in that division, and so that's where I first met him, was working there, and then he moved over to RENCON. So they've done, RENCON's done quite a bit for Fresno COG, so we've worked, worked together for a while, so.
Say, and Sean's been one of the planners that have really utilized the circuit planning and engineering program. Some of them, it's like pulling teeth to give them free work, so.
And they've got a pretty good, you know, boundary of what you can, what you can do, so there's a, there's a good list of items, and, you know, you ask them and COG will let us know whether we can do it, but most of the time, they say yes. So they're very helpful with projects and little things that kind of help us keep things moving along, so.
Yeah, so if you run into Meg Prince from Fresno COG, think her. She's the one running this program, so she does a great job.
So any, any other questions? So, do you need a motion of approval, right?
Yeah, we'll need to adopt the, motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, so Chair will entertain a motion. Commissioners Stop and Brink made the motion to approve, does the motion have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Helmer made the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Five zero, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, bye-bye.
Moving right along to public hearings, we have two. The first one is city-initiated zoning text amendment number ZTA 22-01, amending the planning and zoning code related to accessory dwelling units, floodplain regulations, and density bonus. You want to go ahead and?
All right. Chairman, commissioners, so tonight we're asking, as we do through zoning text amendments, is adoption of resolution 022P-005, which is a zoning text amendment related to accessory dwelling units. So the state legislature enacted accessory dwelling unit legislation in 2017, 18, and 20. So as you may be aware, through the news or anywhere else, there's been, I think there's been hundreds of housing bills that have gone through the state legislature in the past four years, especially recent. And basically, it's to reduce the regulatory barriers and costs, streamline approval, and expand the potential capacity of ADUs in response to California's housing shortage. A summary of the state laws and changes, we have summarized and attached to the report. The state ADU laws preempt local ordinances in cities and must implement these laws with limited exceptions. So as a result, the city's existing ordinances unenforceable by state law, and staff have been applying the state requirements to all ADU requests. So it's been a little arduous task, because people hear about it in the news, and then they're calling and they want to know about how to do, you know, accessory dwelling units. So we've had to funnel through the state law to kind of, you know, allow some of these projects to move forward, to convert garages, or whether they add a second unit on the back, or, you know, it, it's endless. So we kind of provide what an ADU is, I'm not sure if the commission, I'm not sure if the commission's completely familiar with, you know, accessory dwelling units and then junior accessory dwelling units. But state law is, and the legis, and the legislation is very explicit in terms of what's allowed, and, you know, obviously, it's one of those controversial things where it limits more and more of the local agency's ability to regulate these types of facility, these types of units. So in our, so we've drafted an ordinance, we're working with self-help enterprises on this ordinance, it's actually part of a local public housing grant that we received, a part of our cottage home program, that I think the commission may be familiar with. This is a long time coming, it's one of those things we talked about, I think, when Clovis introduced their cottage home program quite a few years ago, and it's been very successful, that as this, as the ADU legislation changed, we needed to update our ordinances. Once the ordinance is updated, then we would move forward with the program guidelines. I'm currently in the works, in the, in negotiations with an architect firm to draw, basically, who's going to be contracted to draw plans and have full plan sets available to residents to basically build ADUs, whether it be on their own or with a contractor, but basically walk in and practically get an over-the-counter permit to build a second dwelling, or an accessory dwelling unit. So tonight, we're reviewing and taking a look at the overall ordinance for ADUs. Now, this isn't a draft format, so it's kind of like a summary, it's not like you don't see all the whereas's up top, but this basically is the language that's being recommended. It's really just in line with state law. So when you actually look at the legislation, and then you look at the ordinance, there's not a lot of deviation from the ordinance, there's not a lot of leeway that the state gives us in terms of deviation in the ordinance. And so when we look at the, these, this ordinance, you're really, the only things that we were able to kind of, I wouldn't say restrict, but control, is where these ADUs go. And one of the things that we, we set up initially, because we wanted it in line with our cottage home program, was to really limit these to alley-loaded, alley-loaded properties, and restrict them to alley-loaded properties, because the way that the ADU or the law is written, there can be some unintended consequences in certain housing types, because garage conversions are permitted. There are other types of conversions, there's additional, there's additional add-ons that can cause impacts where you may not be able to provide what needs to be provided at those lots. So like a lot of single-family lots that don't have alleys, if you add a unit in the back, you have to have enough park, you have to at least have one additional parking space to be able to accommodate that, you may or may not be able to have that. A garage conversion can then change the whole dynamic of the way a neighborhood could look when you start enclosing garages and they're not being utilized, vehicles are being pushed out onto the streets. And so we, we felt that there were some unintended consequences, and really, the focus of the cottage home program was to be able to really redevelop our alleys. We're starting to clean up our alleys, we're repaving a lot of our alleys, and we've seen, I, I saw what it did in Clovis in terms of, you know, revitalizing those alleyways, it cleans them up, you get more activity back there, it kind of can limit some of the other concerns that are, that you have over there. And it's a lot easier for access, for parking, other dynamics that come with this. So that was probably one of the, the major things that we did was basically kind of identify an area, and the law does allow us to identify an area or a zone that we wanted to limit it to. But everything else is pretty much like the size, you know, how high, all of that stuff is kind of limited based on legislation. So it's really just changing our, our ordinance to reflect what state legislation is. This still has to go to HCD to be reviewed and approved, just like our housing element has to be. So this is our draft, it's got to be sent, and then once it's approved through a screening process by the state, which I've heard it can be pretty rough at times, then we, you know, we, we would have to, I don't know if we'd come back or how that works in terms of having to make changes to it. But we're moving this forward so we can actually get going on our cottage home program and have kind of an idea of where these are going to go, so we can develop these units to accommodate and make sure they meet the criteria. So with that, I've kind of summarized, I don't know how much in detail you guys want to go into.
So Sean, over the years, do you have any idea of how much demand is out there that have been denied because we didn't have the ability to accommodate?
So in our existing ordinance, we call them second dwelling units, we've never really had like these accessory dwelling units, they call them second dwelling units in our ordinance, and that's basically what's, code is being changed. It had a lot of requirements, like you had to have a 10,000-square-foot lot, there was a lot of things that you had to have, so it really discouraged any small type development. Like if you want a, an ADU that's 750 square feet, you really couldn't build that unless you had, you're on like a quarter-acre lot, which most units aren't on, on that big of a lot. So it really made it difficult. This law really changed in terms of garage conversions, you know, you've got detached garages off these alleys, people want to convert the garage, they can, and all, we're basically just going to require them to put parking adjacent to it. I think there are some things that were discouraging, like, you know, the covered parking compared to just having a parking slab. Clovis doesn't require covered, covered parking for theirs, you know, and some of the pictures that I've seen, and some, and when I did a tour of it quite a few years ago, it didn't make it worse by having just a slab for someone to park their car. Now, if they want to put a covered, covered patio over or whatever, that, that'd be fine. But for the, for all intents and purposes, you know, it was up to this, it is up to the jurisdiction whether you want to require covered or non-covered, we chose not to require covered parking. Because we do want to see these, we want, we do, we do recognize that there are folks that could benefit from these types of units, and the more we, the more expensive it becomes and the more difficult it makes to add these additional requirements, it does make some challenges that way, yeah.
So if somebody does this, do they then have to put in a separate set of utility metering for gas, electric, and all that, or does it run off the meter of the main home?
They can, they can do either or. So we, we've, we've talked internally that we would probably, we, we can do separate units, we could do separate metering, because water's metered, we could do separate water connections, because they can't sell it individually, so technically, you could connect into the same service. So I mean, obviously, everything for sewer usually flows to the alleyway, so you could basically have the fall to one location, that second unit could pick up on that same sewer line and then go out. Water, you know, if the tenant, I mean, if the owner decides, I want a separate water meter for this unit, not a problem, they just have to pay the water connection fees and, for the, for the install of the, for the meter to be installed. But, because since it's metered, you don't want to have to try to differentiate, you know, who's using more water, the ADU or the primary house. It also doesn't, it also takes away the owner occupancy requirement, so that's another thing that's changed. That was another discouragement of second units before, was the owner occupancy requirement too.
This is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, go ahead.
It did have, it did change from owner occupant not needing to be there, what I read it, it had to be a, a agency before that would be possible, is that the language in there saying that either it was a government organization that was running it, or?
No, as far as I know, it does not require owner occupancy of either unit.
You could have two rentals, basically?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I manage some of these units, and there's two on one lot like that, and they got separate units, or utilities and so forth. And one of the concerns, you know, they all pay their separate water, trash, street sweeping, and whatever, but these guys are pulling in through the alley, but the street sweeper never goes down that thing, and they're paying those fees. Is that, would that be an issue, if someone in a back unit is paying those fees and was not getting the services?
For which, what services?
Street sweeping.
He means for the person whose entrance is on the alley, there's, on their city bill, they have separate services, the alley person is getting a street sweeping charge, and yet the street sweeper doesn't go down alleys.
Well, currently, well, it has in the past for a while, what? Oh, go ahead.
If you wanted to fix that issue, you could just have it as like an, as, as like a separate add-on meter to the property, to where, say, you know, some address, say 111, you know, Harrison Street, would have two water meters hooked on it, so it would just be that one house paying the street sweeping fee.
So they could have that removed, then, if they were utilizing the street?
Well, you couldn't have it removed, because the, the front house would still be using,
No, but the guy in the back could have it taken off, is that what you're saying?
Right, because it would just be on the one bill, right?
All right, and then I have one more, while I'm good. It's on page two. On page two, it says, "An ADU may be an efficiency unit or a manufactured home as defined." Manufactured home opens up a lot of questions for me, is it, would a trailer be a manufactured home?
Has to have a permanent foundation, and we do have regulations on pre-manufact, on manufactured homes in our code, in our zoning code now.
It would have to meet the same building.
Got to be less than 10 years old, and it's got to meet certain criteria related to surrounding properties, so, I mean, you're not going to put a mobile home on it, it's got a, it's going to be more like a pre-manufactured home is what you're looking at.
Okay.
So we have, we have criteria for that, and so that's one of the things that I get a lot of requests for, is putting mobile homes and pre-manufactured homes, so I always direct them to our zoning code in terms of the requirements for those types of, those types of, those types of units. And just to add real quick, I wanted to clarify, we talked about the owner occupancy. So there's ADUs, and then there's junior ADUs. Junior ADUs are attached to the primary residence, when there's a junior ADU, owner occupancy is required, but for ADUs, it's not. So if you have a home and you have an attached junior ADU, then the owner has to be living in one or the other, from what I.
Okay, okay, that, that's what, okay.
Yeah, so it says right here, under owner occupancy not required for ADUs, says owner occupancy is required in the single-family resident in which a JADU will be permitted.
Page nine, okay.
That's on page nine, yeah. So the owner may reside in either the remaining portion of the structure or the newly-created JADU. Owner occupancy is not required if the owner is a governmental agency. So that's where you can, that's where you saw that area, that, and that's got to be out of state law, because I wouldn't come up with that.
I didn't think so.
So.
And then they're, they're lightening up the footprint a little bit, it looks like they could cover more on this.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're, you're going into more lot coverage, setbacks, and all of those that they, that they require, that they allow to go into the setbacks. See, the thing is zoning, setbacks on, and this is where the state's encroaching in, in local land use, because typically, five foot is kind of a standard setback, especially when you're building a structure, permitted structure, especially, not just like a small shed. Because once you get within that five foot, the cities can allow three foot, but it triggers more fire code, because now your separation from the property line is closer than five feet, which triggers two-hour firewall compared to a one-hour firewall. Or, I'm sorry, maybe it's a one-hour firewall before it doesn't require that. So once you get, once you encroach into those setbacks, that's why a lot of cities have those five-foot setbacks for residences. One, because once you can decide five feet, it's pretty close, but it triggers other fire protection for the building, the construction itself.
Multifamily can be four feet. On page four.
Yeah, so there's definitely, you know, added regulation that's kind of supersedes anything that we can regulate. So a lot of this, like I said, is really, and, and this ordinance is really, has come from multiple iterations of ordinances that have been submitted to HCD already from other jurisdictions, and so it's very consistent with a lot of other cities. And then we just tried to, you know, cater a little bit where we could. I asked lots of questions during my comments, going back and forth with our consultant on say, hey, do we have to keep this in? And most of the answers were yes, and, but then there's other areas where we had some flexibility to, to make changes, so. Any other questions?
Yeah, once again, and I'm assuming that it's in the, in the state language, but they talk about in, under definitions, it has to have a closet?
Yes, because it has to have a room, so it has to have, because typically, if you call, in order to be, to be considered a bedroom, it has to have a closet.
Right.
So if it's an efficiency apartment, a unit where everything's open, it's obviously a mixed kind of use, so it's got, it's basically, it could be the kitchen, front room, and the bedroom, all in one like studio, it's got to have a closet.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the language about having a water closet and a lavatory, that, is that state language?
Yes.
Because I'm not really.
Which is basically a bathroom.
Well, yeah, and I wasn't sure, is like what, how you differentiated a water closet from a lavatory, I mean, which was, which, anyway.
You know, I think this could be building code lingo too, that's been integrated into this ordinance, in terms of ensuring that it's consistent with the building code.
Okay.
Because the building code, like when you say efficiency apartment, that's straight out of the building code, that, that term is out of the building code. So I think it's just, they're matching it up, so we make sure there's no confusion on city's ability to interpret what an efficiency apartment is.
Okay.
Or what a lavatory is.
Do you have a kitchen?
Yes.
And then on page 22, under the architecture requirements, there's no language after E.
Which, which page is that on?
22, at 22 of the total pages.
Okay, on the PDF itself?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're getting into.
It would be page eight of the Title IX.
Oh, page eight of the Title IX?
Of the Title IX, yes, so total, from the beginning, though, it's 22.
Architecture requirements.
Yeah.
After E? After E? Oh.
E, there's no language.
I think that's a typo, because it has F-G-H-I.
Right, so I didn't know whether there was nothing in E and that--
That was an enter error, probably. They probably entered it, and then it just made E, but it didn't, and then it pushed the windows and doors down to F. So we'll just, I'll make sure, we'll go through and finalize that when we put it into ordinance format.
And then a couple pages later, there are insert tables.
Oh.
And I--
That didn't get updated.
I didn't get my tables.
So that was supposed to be updated. So just to clarify, that was one of the things, that was a last-minute update. It may have, I have a feeling the agenda may have not gotten re-pushed after she added it. So just for context, the table is the same table that's currently in our density bonus regulation. So, excuse me, the updates to Chapter Six under density bonus and floodplain is just adding some additional language regarding ADUs.
Okay.
So when it references like second dwelling units or any other type of unit, all they're doing is injecting information. None of the substance of any of the density bonus or the floodplain ordinance changed. It's more else the recognizing accessory dwelling units. So the table that was in there is the same table that's currently in the density bonus. It will be included. The document, I sent it to her because my consultant sent it because I noticed the table was missing, but I sent it, but it didn't look like the actual agenda got restitched, which means that it didn't update the new document that was put in there, so I apologize for that. But it is a document, it's nothing, there's nothing changing to that table. It's the same information that's currently on the code related to income levels and everything for density bonus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
What is the bonus for--
So density bonus is for low-income seniors, different demographic groups that, where you have, so we did, the perfect example is for the senior housing project on Pacific and Elm. It was an affordable housing project. So what it does is, say, you have, let's use it for easy. We have 20 units to the acre is our density for a high-density development project, multifamily. We're on one acre, so the most we can develop is 20 units, right? Density bonus, if it's an affordable housing project, we can add more units. So we can go higher density than what our code specifies.
Oh, okay.
So like with the senior housing project on Pacific and Elm has a little bit higher density than what's allowed because of the affordability of those units. And we have that because of the tax credit and the funding source for that project. So that's pretty much what the density bonus is. I mean, it goes into parking reductions and different types of things that we're allowed to add. Now, density bonus law is real. It's not something we just came up with and put in here. It's another one of those, you know, state requirements that we have to offer to like senior projects, low-income projects, low, close to transit, those types of things, so.
Doing your job.
Well, the public hearing is now closed. If there's no need for any further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Stop and Brink made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Helmer made the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Aye. Motion carries. Five-zero. Okay, moving on to the second public hearing. City initiated zoning tax amendment number ZTA 19-04, amending the planning and zoning code related to in-home family daycare facilities to align with state law.
Thank you. I'll make this one brief. As you can see from the report, this has kind of been a long-time housekeeping item. I wanted to give credit to our youth in government. Alizé, unfortunately, she was sick. She was supposed to be here tonight. She's been helping me with these ordinances. And so she's been doing a lot of work during the week and working on learning how to do staff reports and doing research, and we'll talk more about food trucks later, where she's been doing, she's been doing a lot of research on that as well. But she's helped prepare some of these and helped, and assisted me with it. And this was a perfect opportunity for her to learn the ordinance process and going through the whole steps and how much work it is just to go through an ordinance revision just to remove a conditional use permit requirement, which is what we're doing tonight for this item. So as you may be aware, as part of the housing bills that had adopted by the state, it addressed in-home family daycares. And initially, prior law treated in-home family daycares up to eight kids as a residential use, right? No, you're not running a business. It's just part of, you know, living in a home, that you can take care of eight kids. And then anything over that, up to 14, typically, cities could regulate in terms of a conditional use permit or some type of permit, business license. They treat it more like a business enterprise and more on the realms of a home occupation. Well, with the new housing bills, that changed, and so now, up to 14, they're treated as residential uses. So you can't issue, you can't require a business license, you can't require special permitting, and, but we can keep the regulations that we currently have in place in terms of, you know, a certain amount of space for playground, you know, play area. You're not going to allow them to have a playground out front. It's got to be in the back. And they've got to make sure they meet the certain criteria. They still have to be overseen by the state to an extent. And so basically, the update to this ordinance was, we're not, we weren't going to get rid of the regulations that we have for large family daycares because the state never changed the differentiation of what's a small and what's a large. They kept the definitions the same. So all we did was just basically state that we can't issue a use permit anymore for them. So now, so as you can see on the ordinance, it's just striking out the CUP, and now it says yes. So it's a learning curve because we get complaints still to this day that someone's operating in a daycare and there's 10, 12 kids or whatever. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about that anymore. And so basically, there's no permits, no business licenses that the city can issue for these types of operations because the state of California finds them as a residential use. So with that, that's pretty much the gist of the ordinance. Everything else kind of remains the same, but just all the permit authority goes away.
Public hearing is now open. There weren't any comments on this.
We did not receive any comments, Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Helmer?
Yes, do you have any sense of how many businesses here in town that this would impact? How many conditional use permits you would no longer have to issue in effect?
I think I only have, that I can think of, maybe two or three. I think ones even moved since the law went into effect, so they wouldn't, usually, I think we've gone through one lady that went through two iterations. But other than that, I think that was the only one, and there was maybe a couple others. But it's really, it was always a challenging enforcement effort anyways because you had to confirm how many kids they had. Because unless they were over eight, unless someone actually could verify it, I mean, it was very difficult to prove. So in essence, this makes it easier for us. I mean, if we get complaints, then we have to look at kind of some of what our regulations are, and then code enforcement just has to do some type of investigation to see if there's any concerns. Like if they have a playground, we had one that had a playground in front of their, in front of their unit, jungle gym in front of the unit. We're like, that's not going to work, so we had to notify them to let them know that it had to be in the rear. But that's really what we'll have to do, is we'll have to field complaints as they come in if they become a problem. And then, but we're able to still keep the regulations and some of the criteria for large family. We're able to keep that. So we still have that enforcement mechanism, but it's just we don't have the permit to take, right?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chancellor, the city doesn't give a license in on that or nothing?
Nope.
So the people who take their kids, they don't have anything to ask about?
Yeah, they consider it a residential use. It's not a business. Well, by definition it is, but according to the state, it's not.
You know, we used to always get complaints about so many cars around that would come in and, you know, how do you control that if traffic was a major issue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things we always discussed, and we've received permits, is really looking at what that impact is, making sure we have proper flow, because as you get bigger, that's where you start seeing the traffic impacts. You know, six, five, six kids, probably not a big deal. It's an influx, an outflux, and then it's done. But when you start getting that many, your pickup and drop-off can be longer, it can be different times of the day, and so you have different challenges.
So what's going to happen when they start running the daycare out of the junior unit in the back?
It's a residential use. Commissioner?
Rhetorical question. Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
No, but it's just, this is kind of eye-opening because there's this place that I passed, but I just thought with, you know, one of my neighbors with a lot of kids and stuff, and like, maybe it's not just their kids.
No, it's, I can almost--
Okay.
No?
No, no.
Okay, because the one I'm thinking of that's kind of by you, yeah, it's on a corner.
In the middle of the street.
Oh, okay.
And they just went to a cleanup.
That's a different one. Okay.
And just for context, so there is, we kept the requirements, and these will be things that have to be addressed through code enforcement, but basically, we address location, hours of operation, residency. So obviously, you're not going to just have a house that someone's going to rent out and run a business out of. It's got to be someone living there, so we can verify that. And then, you know, signage, the play area, and then the parking and loading. So there's still those criteria that we kept in there. So as, if complaints come in, we can still address these through code enforcement if we have to.
If it's your residence, though, can you have a jungle gym in the front yard? If it's not--
No, because we would still consider that a safe, attractive nuisance. It's just like putting pool, people that put pools in their front yard, they're technically illegal because they're an attractive nuisance. If it's over, I think it's over 18 inches, it's considered a pool. And so it can become an attractive nuisance, and that's by definition. So a swimming pool is anything over 18 inches. That's in the building code as well. So if it is over that, it's considered a pool, and it cannot be in the front yard. Same thing. Attractive nuisance is a very discretionary tool. Yeah.
Public hearing is now closed. If there's no need for any further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does it have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stop and Brink made the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Moving right along to our second discussion item for the night. Discussion regarding the development of a food truck regulatory ordinance. Now, I always try to keep my comments until the end, if I have any, but I'm just going to say it right here from the get-go. I think this is, what, the third time we've discussed food trucks at the commission and--
Yes, Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, so--
Thank you.
Something--
So I think there's, I think there's some movement. I think we've been requested to put together an ordinance. I was able to refresh some of my old information. As you can see, some of this information in this staff report is probably similar, so I'm not going to act like I started from scratch. I'm a planner, and so I don't reinvent the wheel, and I know there's been a lot of discussion. And I think I even included some additional information, so in terms of our comments. So I know, in the bullet points, there's some responses, and, because I took a lot of notes last time we spoke, and this was almost three years ago. But I wanted to go through this with you so I can start developing an ordinance that can kind of go back to council. What I want to do is kind of prepare a white paper to the council so they can kind of see, you know, these are the things we talked about, these are kind of some of the suggestions. You know, do you like this? Do you like this? Do you like this? What do you guys want to envision? And so, you know, I don't necessarily have any formal recommendations on courses of action, but I wanted to work things through with the commission tonight. And I apologize, you know, we like to have these open discussions, and I did, but of course, we had other items that came on this agenda, so hopefully, you know, we can kind of get through this. We've had the discussions before, so I think I, you know, have a good idea of where the council, where the commission's going.
Could you share with us why it's been raised as an issue now?
To be, I don't really know. I think that there has been a movement from the council to, they've had this resolution that allowed food trucks there, and that's kind of what we ended up last time, is that we allowed food trucks at the parking lot. Well, the insurance requirements, all this other stuff really made it very difficult for these food truck owners. And so then they amended the resolution to allow them on commercial property. So then you've seen a couple other food trucks around. So I think they're getting to the point where we need an ordinance to be able to not only regulate them, but give food truck vendors that are looking to come to the community an indication of where the city stands in terms of their allowances. So if they come to me or they come to someone else, say, hey, I want to open up a food truck in town, what can I do? Here's our ordinance, and you can go at this location, or you can go in these locations. This is what you need to do. You need to have trash can, blah, blah. You're open this many hours, and you can have outdoor seating, whatever. But it's trying to say, you know, what do we want to, how do we want to regulate these food trucks? And I think the best course of action is to have this conversation here and then bring back some of those suggestions and recommendations to the council for them to make those decisions. And then we can go back through the ordinance process. So, you know, currently, you know, obviously, we have the mobile vendor definition, and then we have the mobile vendor vehicle. So we've kind of, I've attached a bunch of different regulations for different agencies. We've tried to summarize in the bullet points some of the things that have come up in multiple agencies. I don't think we need to be just like Emeryville or just like Hanford or just like Lemoore. I think we need to really develop an ordinance that's going to work for our community and that we're comfortable with. So one of them, so basically, as we talk through these items and, you know, chime in as we go through this, is, you know, what kind of approval process, you know, would we be looking at? You know, administrative, planning commission approval, you could go with a temporary use permit or a conditional use permit. I think that we've always had the inclination of wanting to streamline things, and so either going through like an administrative approval or a temporary use permit, where it's something that can be administratively approved, and if we have enough regulations spelled out, it doesn't really require any other further approval unless we see potential impacts based on certain locations. But we can do that by distance from certain uses or whatever, if we need to have separation of sensitive uses. So I'm not sure on like kind of an approval process, what you guys--
So we can just discuss this?
Yeah.
Go bullet by bullet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what, what does everyone feel comfortable with as far as approval process?
Administrative.
That's, I personally agree with that.
I like an administrative also, but I'm thinking of like, if there's some kind of party, a community or whatever, and they want to have like a taco truck come in on a residential street that's very temporary, like on this date, how would that work? Would we need like language that it's administrative, but then there's the temporary for like those specials?
I think some of those could be, and that's a bullet point, fourth to the last is under private events. So food truck permits are not permitted for food trucks operating for a one-day private event or party located either on-site or in the event or in public right-of-way with no retail sale to the general public. So basically, what that's saying is that, the parentheses are kind of maybe recommendations, which is basically, we wouldn't require a permit if you wanted to have a party at your house as long as for that one day, they're not selling to the general public, so it's not forced, they're not like on sale. They're basically like, the person who's running the party basically said, hey, I'm having a food truck, eat all the tacos or all the burgers you want, and then that vendor's going to bill me directly for the party. Then all they're doing is utilizing the parking in front of the facility. So in that case, we can establish that, no permit required, and then basically, they would, you know, move forward. Now, I think from an approval process would be if we're talking about a food truck vendor that's going to be parked on, say, the lot here at Fifth and Elm, and they want to be there for a period of time. And they want to be there for a period of time. My inclination is we do a temporary use permit and we actually build this into the temporary use permit area, um, or temporary uses. Because a food truck is never going to be a permanently affixed structure. So I think in, in essence, it will, it will be temporary no matter what, even if they want to be there for a year or two years. I know there's places where, you know, I, I, I saw this location, I drive to Sacramento a lot, in the city of Lathrip, right off of Interstate Five, they've got a big old concrete area. And there's about eight food trucks that park right there. And you can see it, there's like a little, it used to be a used car dealership, I think, right there. And now they've got canopies, like permanent canopies. But the, you know, the food trucks aren't permanent, they may rotate or whatever, I'm not sure what the arrangement they have. But it's created like this little area, but I don't, still don't see it long, it may not be permanent, right? It's, and they're not permanently affixed, they're not putting themselves on foundations. You know, they're, because of food trucks, that's not the way food trucks operate. So I think that doing it as a temporary permit, maybe it's an annual permit they do. If they're plant, so when they put in an application, they're saying, hey, I want to be at this location and we'll have the regulations, we issue a temporary use permit for it. And then it basically is just renewed on annual basis or discretion to give it up to two years or whatever it is for that particular vendor. So that could be a mechanism to do these food trucks, depending on how they're gonna locate, um, if they're gonna be on private property. Because I think that's really what the, what the desire is, is, you know, for these folks to be able to be on private property inaccessible.
So temporary use permit is consensus? Administrative temporary use permit?
Okay.
Annually, is it?
Um- How would it?
It could be, you just were, I mean, it could, we could say, you know, the, these would be up for, you know, for, they'd be for a minimum of, for, for a year, but with renewals annually, based on, you know, they're, just like our temporary farming ordinance that we have. You know, where we're allowing on 20 acres, you can farm on residentially zoned property, as long as it's 20 acres or more, which is very limited. But it allows that use of that land until, you know, development occurs. And that could be some of the stipulations in there too, is that, you know, once a development application comes in, then, you know, that use permit would potentially go away.
Uh, would you limit the number of these on an annual basis?
Um, that would probably be kind of probably the next one, maybe. Um, is one, one of the locations, I think I even have one on there about how many. Like, yeah, we also have a bullet point talking about concentration of vendors too. So, um, so we want, what we can do is we can go through each one of these, kind of get an idea. And then we can kind of, I can rehash it and make sure it sounds right. And then what we do is we just kind of develop up an ordinance that might, that we can take regulations and develop it, see how it looks. Because I really want to try to simplify this, you know? With the least amount of impacts, I mean, it can be a learning, learning, there might be a little bit of a learning curve on this. But something that makes it easy and let, and flexible for folks to be able, to be able to see how many people really want to come out here and operate food trucks.
And affordable too.
Yeah.
You know, there's such a thin margin.
Yeah, temporary use permits like 200 bucks. So, and it's a quick, and it's a pretty quick process because we'll hopefully have all the regulations spelled out in the ordinance where it's like, hey, it's like a home occupation permit. Here's all our requirements for a home occupation, I'm gonna approve it, but you gotta meet all those criteria and make sure you're maintaining that criteria.
So the conditional use permit, I mean, would you have the ability to not approve that? I mean, if you give it to them for a year, but then there are issues with respect to how they're operated, could you jerk that permit?
Yep.
Okay, you'd have that built into the-
Yeah, any type of permit, whether it's administrative or a conditional use permit, can be revoked. So we can revoke a temporary use permit, and we'll put that, we'll put in for it, we'll put something in there about being able to revoke it, just like a home occupation. If I find out that you're running a business and all of a sudden you're having 50 people show up to your house, or you're, you're selling, you said you were selling online and now you've set up shop inside your home and people are visiting and have no idea what they're going to see until they get there, like a retail shop, I could pull that home occupation if they don't fix it, so.
Could we do, um, a graduated pay structure in the temporary? Like say someone wants to do a three-month permit instead of charging them the full year?
Well, temporary permit, it wouldn't be based on how long they have it, it's the processing time. So a temporary use permit, the fee for a temporary use permit, whether it's for a three-day event or whether it's gonna be for a year, it's the same cost because it's still the same process. Like for the carnival, right, when that comes, I, I do a temporary use permit for that. Um, but if the carnival was gonna be here for a year, it's still the same cost because I still have to process the permit. The cost is the cost of the processing the permit, not how long it's, how long they have it.
Okay, so if we were to do a two-year permit, then it would still be the same cost as if we were doing it every year, which would, like, if it's $200 and they could go a year. If we were to issue a two-year one, would we still be charging them the 200 for two years, which would be better for the business?
You could do that, or you could just set up a small renewal fee where we basically, as they apply for their business license, to renew their business license, they just have a separate, we add a fee where basically they come in, if they come in as a food truck vendor, they pay, you know, say it's 50 bucks. And all we do is review it, say, okay, we've got no complaints, they want to go another year, nothing's changed. And we sign off on it, and I just sign off on the business license for the renewal.
The health department, do they review these trucks?
Yes.
So that would be something that would probably come into licensing with renewal, huh?
Yep, yeah, they have to have their, they have to have all their permits and everything else through, um, through public, Department of Public Health, President of County, for their food trucks to even operate.
Okay, so moving on to location zones permitted. What, what is everybody's, uh, feeling on that? So, I'm, I'm comfortable-
And I've given some examples too, Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but just, um, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with most of the examples given in the parentheses, besides the residential zones, I, I don't think.
Which I think in, in terms of language, we could include residential zones, subject to the exemption. If we, if we do in fact want to allow this exemption for private parties.
Yes, the private party exemption, I'm fine with.
So we would basically just look at residential and then have the exemption for that.
Personally, so I, I wouldn't be very happy if a food truck came and parked in front of my house for the day just to sell some cupcakes or something, so. So for private party exemption, I, I personally be fine with that. Anybody else have any? My, my only concern with all those would be the, the on-the-street one. I, I don't know.
And that's one of the things that we, yeah, kind of have to find out is, do we want to allow them on the street? Because then, you know, that's, that's always-
Is somebody envisioning by on-the-street, like parked on Elm Avenue?
Parked on Elm vending from the sidewalk.
Well, like, on our narrower streets, I can see that that would definitely be an issue, especially with like lane reductions and stuff like that. But if you're driving through LA where they have taco trucks, whatever, set up on the really wide streets, which we have several of those, um, and they set it up there where it doesn't impede traffic at all.
The challenge, the challenge is, is the accessibility, ADA accessibility. Because if you do have a food truck parked on an, even whether it's, whether it's a narrow or, or, or wide street, it's really about the accessibility on the, the right-of-way, the trial, the path of travel for folks on the sidewalk. Because if you do have someone parked on there vending, there may be, you know, they may be impeding into the public right-of-way. So if you're trying to get through, you may have a line or whatever, it may be blocking that public right-of-way. Now, on wider sidewalks, where you've got 10-foot sidewalks, it might be somewhere where you can do that. I'm not sure if there's, the only thing I don't, I can't confirm is whether Caltrans would have any problems with, you know, them vending from the state highway.
Yeah, probably so.
On the streets in LA, if I'm remembering correctly, and I could be wrong, they don't walk up to the truck on the sidewalk. It's out, like, it's different from the sidewalk and they have like some tables and stuff set up in the street.
That doesn't seem safe.
Oh.
Yeah, and if they already have toilets accessible and hand wash things?
Yeah, so that's another, that's another, yeah.
Those are bullet points.
That's another factor that can play into location though, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think no other state, I would agree.
Yeah, Caltrans wouldn't allow that.
Well, we're gonna run into those problems as we start doing the road diet and everything else down Elm Avenue that you're gonna start, you're gonna start running into a lot more. Because those are wider, wider vehicles, you know, potentially impeding into the, the buffered bike lanes and that kind of stuff.
As a vendor, you wouldn't really want to park that truck in a place like that where your business is not gonna get to you. You'd think these guys would want a, you know, an open lawn or someplace that'd be more accessible.
That's what I kind of envision, is being able to utilize some of these underutilized vacant lots to be able to provide, you know, accessibility to these food trucks. And that's where the temporary use kind of comes in, where, you know, let them park there, let them put up some tables and chairs if that's the case, you know, and have some folks access the, you know, the food truck.
With the vacant lots, that's gonna be with the owner's approval, right?
Yep.
Like if they don't have the owner's approval, then they're in violation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we would require that as part of the application process.
And what about parks, public parks? I don't, I don't see that that's covered here.
I, I would think if somebody wanted to go set up a cat park, they would have to get the Parks District involved.
So I would avoid probably public property.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, that's kind, I think we didn't, we didn't necessarily put that in there just because of the fact that, I don't know if it's a good, good option for parks.
But, but yeah, that would be like a prime area if there was something going on, you know, to have some food trucks over there, say a cat park.
The parking lot at a park would be?
Yeah.
Well, it does say, I mean-
Or the area around that park.
I mean, if the Parks District wanted to have a food truck there, you know, they potentially could. Now, parks, they're in residential districts primarily, so they're not really in a commercial area. And I think, you know, maybe the, the goal is to have these food trucks in, in commercial areas, um, not necessarily in the residential neighborhoods.
That's, that's personally my vision. I, I mean, I, I'm just saying, I'm just talking, I live by a park. And again, if somebody came and I start seeing, I pay attention to the cars in my neighborhood, I know the normal cars. I start seeing a bunch of weird cars, I'm gonna be paranoid out on my street painted. I, it's just, I, I don't like things that attract people that shouldn't be, that don't live in my neighborhood to come in, you know?
But I'm, I'm thinking of places like Sacramento that I'm familiar with, that basically land park, they will host, um, like food truck things and bounce houses and things like that.
Well, I think that that comes in as, as whether we look at like, like events, like whether we look at it like from a special event standpoint where it's unique situations, rather than permitting someone just to be at a certain location. Because we won't necessarily, like through this approval process, like if they're on the street, we have to just decide whether we're gonna allow them on the street because they're gonna be more mobile at that point. So it, if we're, if we decide, I mean, if there's a recommendation to talk about on the streets, then we'll be, they're more mobile, we're not gonna issue a permit to be parked in one location. That's a more of a general statement saying we're gonna allow them to basically be on the streets and stop and stand, which is the term we use for, you know, mobile vendors, for a longer period of time than what's currently permitted. And that's really where we get into the, that's really where you get into the nuance of not allowing food trucks right now because of stopping and standing requirements, they can't be there for more than like 10 minutes at a time.
But like at Derby, there's food trucks that show up there because it's a special event and it's approved through that event process, so there would be a mechanism.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a special event the Parks District's gonna have, we're not gonna stop them from having food trucks. We probably won't even really oversee that.
Well, for example, the, the library does the summer, not the summer, the September market thing. And they bring a couple of food trucks there in this, in the street in front of the library. Would that be?
I think you just, I think we, what we do is we set it up as a special event.
Special event, okay.
And just allow, and make it, make it an exception and just do a special event permit.
Okay.
And we just review it and say, hey, we're gonna have, we're gonna take up a couple of parking stalls, we're gonna put them on there. Just like with, I mean, when we do Mardi Gras and we do all the other downtown events, I think we can handle that through like a special event permit.
Okay.
Um, which we can definitely develop in there too. Um, I think it's a good idea to have some type of special event, um, process. And just make it really easy about how we would approve those types of events. And whether it be for a nonprofit only or, you know, local agency, whether it be a government agency, school or, or local nonprofits that want to run like, you know, a special event, then we just do it under that.
And then would we have that go through whoever's organizing the event or through the vendor?
It'd be whoever's organizing it, because even when you get like health department clearance, you have, there has to be an event coordinator and then there's all your vendors that have to sign on to that event. Just like when we've done our beer gardens, for example, at the events, we have to fill out a form, but then we have to submit that to the chamber, whoever's running the event. And then they submit all the doc, all the vendor forms to the health department. So I can, I'll, I'll make, I'll put a note of the special event process.
Hours of operation, what's everybody's-
So location though, let's go back to location real quick, Chairman. Are you guys comfortable with, you know, industrial, commercial, you know, vacant lots, um, existing businesses? Which that term means like, you're gonna be in someone's parking lot, right? So, um, and then we can elaborate on that a little bit where, you know, I think we added some things on here where basically if you're gonna be in an existing business, make sure that you don't take up more than X amount of square feet or parking spaces at that business. Which was very com- commented other, in other codes too.
Time limitations.
7:00 AM seems pretty early.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anybody wanting this. I don't, I don't know.
Construction's safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're gonna be in commercial zones, so I mean, you, you know, starting early may not be, not be a huge problem.
And if there's a special event, you know, like, I think it was Relay for Life used to go like overnight and into the early morning hours and something like that, I-
So is everybody comfortable with what's listed, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM with extensions granted for Relay for Life, different events?
Special events.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody's good with that? Okay, a distance from like existing competitors, brick and mortar restaurants and residences, 100 feet away. The example is 100 feet away from restaurants.
This is what I always felt was the biggest contention on why we never did it. But I don't know if it was, it was never really brought up, to be honest. But, um, this is just a suggestion, or whether or not we just kind of let it ride and, you know, see how it goes. I mean, it really, you could do it under the temporary use permit. I do have the ability to, it's hard to see exactly what uses. I mean, it's a small enough town where I could pretty much, I could probably anticipate what it is. The challenge is, we have to make some indication that if someone decides to move into a location within that distance, that it doesn't preclude that taco, that, that food truck from having to move.
You know, I mean, but they don't have to say if somebody other, you know, there's a takara and some other takara moves in next door.
That's right.
That's business.
Very good.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because I, I do know that sometimes a business will partner with a food truck to offer something that they don't have or a subsidiary of their own business. And why can't they be co-located or located near?
Yeah.
I, I like your let it ride and see what happens.
I mean, when we have an event downtown, you know, we have restaurants downtown and there are food vendors right there when there's a special event. It, you know, I mean, I know this would be an ongoing thing, but-
Yeah. No, I'm, but that's, that's fine, we can, we can, we can recommend that.
Letting it ride, yeah, that's, so. Okay, what about utilities? Do you think people should be self-sufficient or have the opportunity to hook up to electricity at a building if?
If they get approval?
I think they should be self-sufficient.
I mean, most food trucks are self-sufficient.
And if we're talking about being a temporary type activity or temporary use, not saying that they're not gonna be there for a long period of time, but, um, yeah, I mean, that's probably my recommendation is to probably be self-sufficient.
Yeah, yeah. Parking standards. So, surface type, what do you mean by length of time? How long they can be in one spot?
Yeah, so that may, that may be a moot point if we're talking about, you know, a temporary use. So if we're not, and we're not looking at being on the streets, um, then I think that we would just, I mean, parking standards would be just how long. But that, that, the length of time is not gonna be an issue.
Okay.
But we have to require ADA accessibility, right?
Um, I, I'm pretty sure they would need to. Maybe a little challenging, I'm not sure how that would work if they- Um, I, I'm pretty sure they would need to. Maybe a little challenging. I'm not sure how that would work if they're on a vacant lot.
That would be a little.
I don't think all of them are. I mean, I've been to some that are kind of like, almost like not permanent, but they've, they've gotten comfortable in their area.
But if we as the city don't require that, are we?
I'll, I'll look into that. I'll ask the question. Um. And then I think that surface type, I mean, I, I, I think as long as it's got some type of improved surface or are we looking, I mean, so if you want to put a, say you want to put a talk, a truck across the street here, um, and it's dirt, perhaps maybe under, you know, maybe you have to put some, we're not, we're not creating a permanent situation, but maybe putting some like base down or some type of rock down. I, I mean, do we do that or do we just make them put it on dirt?
I'd say dirt. I mean, when we found the circus over there on the dirt lot, like it was what it was, people got in.
They're not gonna try to, you know, take their rig into someplace that's, you know, mired in mud or.
And forgive me, I thought we actually had rain here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be, I don't, it's not gonna be real attractive for their business to be in a sloppy spot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not like we have a lot of boulders that people are gonna have to scramble through to get anywhere.
Yeah, that's fine.
We already talked about vacant lots or existing businesses.
Oh, and then parking spaces. Um, so we looked up these standards, the 540 square foot or three parking spaces, that would be more towards existing businesses. Is that, that's pretty much a standard that we saw that was pretty common, if you're gonna be in an existing business. So if you guys are comfortable with that, then we'll use the, um, we'll use that standard.
I would say that's the one thing that I've noticed that people sometimes do. Um, and I don't know if it's exempted in the, or like specifically written out in, in their ordinances. But sometimes what people do when they set up in a parking lot is they take up the handicap spot or one of the handicap spots.
Okay, so no hand, well, make sure they don't take up.
So like, you know, you can have that, but they've already had to pass the regulations with that handicap accessible spot for that business. And then to have it eaten up with.
We'll just make sure they remove the ADA, that you can't take up an ADA stall.
Yeah.
Has to be a standard stall. That's fine. We can do that.
Shall alcohol be permitted? I say no.
I agree.
I, it's just too, too many unknowns with the temporary location.
And the majority of the ordinances did not permit alcohol.
Yeah, cause then you're gonna have people.
And I don't know if ADA, I honestly don't know if ABC will issue a license for a food truck.
And a couple of my neighbors have food trucks. Um, and I'm trying to think of all the ones that I'm familiar with and, no, they would partner maybe with, um, a wine bar or something like that, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I agree with you. I'm not sure ABC.
Yeah, but most of the ordinances said no.
Not in a beer truck. Yeah, that was interesting. Yeah, for a wedding.
So, no alcohol. Hours of operation.
How does that determine limitations?
I mean, yeah, yeah, I, I don't.
I don't know. I made a mistake.
Okay, so perfect. We could, we can move right along to noise standards. Do we allow music? Speakers?
And so most places did not allow music.
Yeah.
That's the ordinances, cause like it's very difficult to control that, um, because, you know, you're out there with the sound pressure meter if you're trying to figure out how loud they can be, how loud they can't be. Um, so most plate, most ordinances that I reviewed did not allow for any kind of external sound.
But if this were going to be granted under a special event, then that special event thing might be able to have music?
Yeah, completely different, yeah. I think, I think really.
I don't want competing, I don't want competing.
I think we're talking primarily to the temporary.
Yes.
Permit. The special event, I will, I will put together a process for that, make it relatively harmless process, similar to what we do now. I mean, it's not a whole lot different. We're pretty flexible with special events.
So, no. Signage, oh boy, signage is always a fun, lively topic to discuss. Yes.
I mean, staff's recommendation is basically like an A-frame freestanding sign.
Okay.
Um, I need to ask that question.
Light up or not light up?
We could probably use the same standard that we currently use under our temporary sign ordinance. Uh, let me, let me see, I can get it real quick.
Up to 10 square feet allowed?
Let's see if I've got A-frame signs. I think they're under temporary. Uh, let's see, cause I remember we did root a lot on those things.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, page four.
Hmm.
Is it one sign up to 10 square feet is allowed? Does that?
I don't know. I think that's a different, that's a kind of an overview of, that's a breakdown of all the different standards for different ordinances, I think. It's not the one. I was trying, I think it's an exempt sign, I think is what it is. Let me see.
Yeah.
It's kind of small.
They got a food truck coming. What is this?
I'll, I can look it up, but if you want to be consistent with our, our current A-frame.
This one, yeah.
What is that? Which one is that one?
I think that was a 10 square feet.
Yeah, these, this is a different, yeah, this is a different.
For food vendors?
10 for, 10 square feet would be probably fine. Yeah, I mean, just, just basically, yeah, just do like an A-frame, we could do like an A-frame sign called a sandwich board, that's what it's called. I can probably find it that way. I think it's called a sandwich board sign. There we go.
So, did you find it?
Yeah, I've got, uh, 20, let's see, so we allow, hold on a second. So. Menu boards, okay, see, that's menu boards. Why did it, oh.
We'll move along.
Yeah, go ahead.
To the next one, type of vehicle. It says self-propelled. I'm fine if they have a trailer. I mean, we've got one right in town right now that it's actually a trailer. So I mean, we're fine if it's self-propelled.
I'm multitasking right now.
Or trailer. Okay. Concentration of vendors, I mean, uh.
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
So total sign area maybe no more than 12 square feet with a maximum of six square feet per side. So that's, that's an A-frame sandwich board sign. So if you want to stay consistent with that, then all I can, I can just call out that particular section.
12 square feet.
Can they have like a light up open sign either in their window or attached to the?
Yeah, I'd be considering like an exempt sign. That'd be fine.
Could the lights be on the center? Like LED lights running on?
I don't see why not. We can allow lighted.
So concentration of vendors. I, I. I, I, I don't, I don't want to get into regulating who, where, who.
There's always so many vendors you'll put on a certain lot or whatever. I think that's gonna take care of the selling.
And I, and I agree. I think that's kind of the way we let it, that's kind of the mentality of let's see how it goes. Um, I think, do we, we don't limit. So if like I've got a, if I've got a, if I've got a vendor on a property, say let's use Fifth and Elmo as an example, and I've approved a temporary use permit for us food truck vendor, and then they approach the owner and someone else wants to be on there, are we comfortable with that? This is just a question. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking at scenarios, but I'm, 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 I don't think I have a problem with it.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
I, I want to encourage free enterprise.
Now, I guess the question was, when do we, when does it become too much of a problem if I had an existing business where we continually start losing parking? Cause if you have an existing business.
Again, again though, I would think that the owner would, after a while, if it's, if there's, if he's got so many, uh, vendors there that it's impeding his actual business, it'll take care of itself, I would think.
Yeah, like at some point they would only still have the ADA spots open and that would limit their entire clientele.
And I think that we can put some stipulations in, in the code that if it becomes a problem, like say all of a sudden now, say Dollar General got four food trucks. And all of a sudden now everyone's parking on the street. That becomes a problem.
Yeah.
So we do have to make a stipulation that if it becomes a traffic problem, so if it ends up starting impeding, then, or we could use a similar requirement, um, there's a requirement, there's, there's a regulation in our code that talks about if you reduce beyond a certain percentage of the parking that's on site too. So say you go, so say you go below 75% of your parking requirement, um, we could use that standard, but then that could preclude someone that doesn't even have enough parking now to be able to even offer a food truck. So we got, I guess we have to look at the consequences of that. So say Dollar General has, you know, they were, they required to have 100. They only had, but now they're required to have 100, but when we approved it 20, 10 years ago, they were only required to have 50. So now they don't currently meet the parking standard, so that would preclude them from having any food truck. So that's, that's just, that's just kind of identifying what potentially from my pers, what could happen when I have to approve a project. I'm like, oh, well, they don't meet the parking standard now.
Can you do like?
Or maybe we do it for the second one. So if they want a second food truck on a lot, they can't go, they can't affect, they can't be.
Well, do you have to put a hard and fast percentage or could you basically say something, you know, impacting, negative impact on the, the traffic and the health and safety of the environment?
Could do that. Mm-hmm.
I think that gives up flexibility until we know actually, I mean, we may have one food vendor that wants to come to Collega or we may have, you know, 50.
I like, I like the flexibility, but I'm thinking if someone wants to bring in two food trucks on their lot and then a business is saying, well, our, my business is going down and they're causing a problem. It allows for some interpretation to give preference to the brick and mortar business who, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, kind of, but you know, I mean.
Maybe you were talking about an existing business might have first right of refusal if it interferes with their normal operation. Is that kind of what you're headed at?
Well, I don't, like I'm for the pre-competition, so if, you know, if there's two food trucks at Dollar General and a restaurant across the street is saying they're losing business because there's those two trucks there and they're saying, oh, this is impeding traffic and it's causing this problem and causing that problem.
They could file the complaint, but whether or not it's actually a complaint is gonna be up at our discretion. I think one of the, one of the issues that I'm thinking of in my head as you guys are talking about this is that if we do have two food trucks and all of a sudden the second food, the added food truck creates a traffic problem, or now all of a sudden vehicles are parking on the street, who do we tell to pull the trucks? I mean, obviously the property owner is gonna be the one that we have to deal with, um, but the applicant's going to be the food truck owner, so, you know, we add one extra food truck, now the owner's gonna have to decide who he's gonna boot out, or do we boot out the person, the newest person? It puts us in a kind of a weird situation where.
It's the business deal with it, cause I mean, technically speaking, it, you know, it should be whoever's most productive.
So the enforcement mechanism's gonna come on the owner, so, cause the food truck vendor is gonna be the one that's gonna submit the application, the owner's gonna sign on it. But if we run into a, a potential problem, I guess we have to, we're gonna have to start dealing with the owner, is who we're gonna deal with.
Be the owner who decides because we don't want to be the one saying.
And then they decide, which is fine, that we can do it that way.
You may like this one better, but since they came second, we're kicking them off and you have to keep the one that you don't have a preference for on your own property.
Yeah, true.
I, I think we need to anticipate possible problems, but we don't necessarily write the regulations to address all the.
I'll, I'll do it very similar to the way I handle home occupations, um, and I think that will probably, I can use very similar language.
And do you have much problem with that, with home occupations?
No.
Okay.
Mm-mm, no. Yeah, cause I have a regulator that says a home occupation shall not create pedestrian, automotive or truck traffic in excess of the normal amount typical in the zoning district with no more than one occupant vehicle present on the street at any given time. So I can use something that's similar nature that kind of addresses that problem. So if it becomes a problem, then we address it with the owner and we just basically say that, you know, he has to make a decision that we noticed that the impact occurred after the second one came.
Ability to use tables, chairs and canopies. Yes. So consensus says yes.
Okay, do we want to stay within, um, the? The sign square footage?
License and insurance requirements. County, yeah.
We're not going to impose any new licensing or other than.
They need a business license, obviously. Yeah.
But in terms of the county health department and those required, or the city, well, the county requirements, we're not gonna add any additional, are we?
No, so we would have to verify, um, county health department as, at the part of the business license. Um, what I would do is under a temporary use permit, I could even condition it where basically they need to make sure they have that as they, when they submit, cause what happens is I'm gonna treat this the same way I do home occupations. So what happens is when they submit their business license application, they submit the home occupation permit as well. Now, the home occupation permit is a planning document, the application and the business license is a finance document. So I process the home occupation. I advise them, I advise the business license department when I send the email off to the, the owner or the business that they've been approved and then they, that triggers the business license department to process their business license. But the way the home occupation is set up, it does give me the ability to place any additional conditions necessary based on that home occupation. Which very limited, based on maybe the way the application's written, like there's certain criteria, some, sometimes they put a condition on there, but not very often do I do that. Sometimes when I feel like a home occupation may become a retail space, I make sure that there's no walk-in clientele that's not by appointment in that sense. So then, just to cover it, but.
Um, now when you say carry, yeah, county licensing and that kind of stuff, what if it's a, a king's cap, say somebody works out of, you know, their, their home.
We'll accept that too.
We would accept.
We do that already, yeah.
And we're not gonna do that special liability insurance or whatever that was that.
Only if they do it here, cause if it's on city property, they have to get it. But if it's out, if it's off that, we don't require it.
Toilet and hand washing station requirements and or, and or within a certain vicinity of a bathroom.
So this is a health department requirement because it's not for the patrons, it's for the workers. Um, so what we were talk, what we talked about is that this is where it gets a little, well, one for refuse, but also for the bathroom, whether or not you want to allow a porta potty at the location. If they're on a vacant lot, do you want to allow a porta potty, which would probably trigger, which would allow it, but do we require them to kind of screen it, you know, so we don't have these porta potties sitting right next to it? How do, how would we want, is that something that you'd want to consider? Cause that would, that really is gonna reduce their ability to operate on these vacant lots. Now, existing businesses, nah, it's not a big deal, cause they can probably use the rest, they can probably use the restroom from the existing business, especially cause for the employees.
Or would there be a mechanism for? Or would there be a mechanism for like two independent food trucks, but would they each need to have their own hand washing station and, and porta potty? Or could they, could there be some kind of agreement, and I don't know how you would, you would monitor that through the, through the permitting.
I think is, I think what we do is if we want to allow it, we'd allow them to have like a porta potty or a, you know, a toilet available. At the location. Um, I would say if it's on a vacant lot, maybe you would do, if it's an existing business, they would need to use the existing res, restroom from the property owner. But that's kind of, that, these are the, this, the questions that.
If there are a vacant lot and they have permission from the neighbor to use the restroom, could that work?
Within two hundred feet.
Yeah, but how do you verify that permission and, you know?
Have them sign something written. All we would need is something verified. If it's revoked, then it's revoked.
Well, what do other cities do? Do they have requirements?
Um, that I did not see a whole lot of, um.
You know, a hand sit, uh, washing station is fine, but I mean, we gave a permit to that recycling place over there by the, uh, but they don't have a bathroom. They didn't have water there. Those people are working there all day long. I mean, they can take care of them.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit different because of, it, this is a health department, because it's a, you're, you're a food establishment, and so they're required to have those things. Where it's different when you have a regular business that you're just running. So, with this, it's strictly because of the health department requirement for the, for the, um, the bathroom. And because they're stationary for more than one hour. That's what triggers it.
So, what are we required to require? That's what I would say is.
We would just have to require a toilet and hand washing station.
Available within two hundred.
Two hundred feet. So, they would have to, so basically, if you want to leave it open. We'd have to feel comfortable with, you know, if, whether they want, I guess the big question is, is do we want to allow porta potties? Or whether or not, or just basically if they're going to provide. The toilet within two hundred feet, they're going to have to provide some type of authorization from a property owner to have access to a restroom.
My, my problem with.
They're going to need it for the health department anyways.
My problem with a porta potty is the fact that they're going to leave at the end of the night. Unless they're going to take the porta potty with them, who knows what's going to happen to that thing all night? With, you know.
Yeah.
Plus, that is, you know, an added expense.
Yes.
I mean, however they need, my thought is however they need to comply with the health standard. Why do we need to require anything more than that?
We're not going to regulate that.
Yeah.
So, could you check to see what the other cities do on that, uh, just to give us some sense of structure?
Yeah, I can look to see.
I think that, uh, I could see pros and cons of that. I hear what you're saying, Josh, and you know, what they need, and well, they're renting that porta potty. Therefore, they're going to have to make, uh, arrangements wherever they're renting it from to pick it up. So, I'm not too sure if we left there, uh, although it couldn't make, like overnight, and then they come back in the morning and have to see that occurring. I don't know. I've got mixed emotions.
But if they're going to be there, say, five days a week or seven days a week, they're not.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm thinking about. Yeah.
How's it going to be serviced? When's it going to be serviced? Whatever's going to start smelling?
Well, and then the vagrants in town, they start.
I'll verify what other cities do. But I didn't really, I didn't see a whole lot on that.
Okay.
And then if it comes down to, that's between them and the health department, and if the health department has an issue.
True. That is, that is true, so it's more or less, hey, you know, if that's a requirement, then they're going to need to be able to show, they're going to have to probably show it if they're going to have a location. But they may or may not have to show a location, because they're not permanent, so they're immobile. So, that's up to them, and maybe we just defer to the health department, and we really don't address it.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. I think that's, that's, that's fine.
Then, is everybody comfortable with, uh, trash receptacle portion? The vendor shall regularly pick up, remove, and dispose of all trash or refuse from their operation that remains within two hundred feet. The vendor's position, everybody's good with that? They got to pick everything up, leave it the way they found it, end of the day?
Should we require or suggest that in addition to a trash receptacle, they also have a recycling room?
Yeah, we can do that.
Cans and bottles and whatever.
In addition, if we're going to do that, there's also the new green waste requirement.
The organic waste? So, they're going to have to follow, we'll just have to, I mean, they're going to be a commercial business, so they're going to have to follow the same guidelines, so.
Recommend they follow that.
There is no pending code enforcement action on the lot. I'm all for that. Then, I think we covered special events already.
I'll put together kind of a permit process for that, but it's going to be more, you know, kind of just generic on the, on the process for that.
I mean, I think we already discussed permanent food trucks at business, you know, with how long we're going to allow a, a permit. Exemptions, are there any exemptions anybody's thinking of?
What about this school or college property? As it stands now, would, would one of the schools be able to bring a food truck on?
They, they do, it's one of those things where we just don't really enforce anything, but they are in the city. They're not, they're, they're not immune to regulation. But I think it's good to have the exemptions in there, so at least it's explicit, just like, you know, when we talked about, um, what was it? Were we talking about business license or, um, oh, temporary use permits, I think it was temporary use permits, where we literally put in there lemonade stands, if you guys recall that? Because there's always that, I, we, there was that story in Florida where the, they wrote a ticket to these little girls because they had a lemonade stand, because they didn't have a business license. So, it's just, I think it's just more or less good to have it written out, so basically, hey, you know, if the Parks District has an event out on, at their park, or if they have it at the, uh, it's exempt, you know? They can have food trucks there. We're not going to regulate that, um, so we can do that on public, public property.
Vehicle maintenance, I mean, I'm, I'm kind, yeah, that's.
I think it's just a generic thing, is the vehicle needs to be maintained, you know, it's, we're not going to want some junky vehicle that's dripping, that's dripping oil and other things that we, has problems. You know, you say this, but people have to.
The county health?
Well, or the nuisance thing that you were just talking about, we'll work with that one, the, with the play structure in the front yard and the.
Tractor nuisance?
Tractor nuisance?
Not necessarily. I mean, it looks bad, it's not attractive. Attractive nuisance is something that creates a problem, where, like, if you have a nice eight, you know, swimming pool in your front yard. Kid goes, oh, Greg can go swim, then goes drowns and dies, that's, that's become, that's because it attracted them to it. I'm not going to be attracted to a, a bad-looking truck. And I can tell you almost every ordinance we looked at had specific language, and it's very gen, generic in terms of just maintain your vehicle.
Who's going to be the one going around and look at the truck, because, well, I don't think that's, uh, well-maintained or well-run, that's well-maintained. You know, who's going to get into that?
Maybe it's got a flat tire, they got it up on a jack stand. It's going to be one of those glaring things. It's not going to be like, you know, a faded paint or something like that, but I think it's going to be. Yeah, that's, that's a little different. I, I, and I can look at some of the language and some of the, the general language they use for that, but a lot of the ordinance did have that. They just don't want ISOR, I think it's really, they just don't want ISORS being there for a long period of time.
I think that's a good word to use.
ISOR?
Yeah, but ISOR.
Eye of the behol, eye of the beholder. I'll, I'll create a definition for ISOR.
You know, um, I'm thinking of some business that repainted itself, because people didn't like the color and, you know.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Why did that have to happen? I mean, seriously. I don't want to start policing what, how people have to.
Yes, and if we have one that's sitting on a jack for too long, it's obviously not mobile or going anywhere, and then it becomes a code enforcement problem.
Yeah.
I, I think that it's just generic, something generic in there, or, I don't know, just.
I mean, the reality is, we're just trying to avoid having, like, ugly, like, you know.
Broken down, that.
Yeah.
Chugs in and it's going to stay there.
Yeah, it came on a trailer.
Yeah, yeah.
And it has four wheels, but does not move.
But then it still falls under code enforcement because a vehicle hasn't moved.
But it's different, but it's not.
But, but again, do we want to get it to where code enforcement has to get involved, or do we want to just try to fully prevent it with the ordinance? That's, that's the only, that's the, I think Sean's point.
Yeah, and that, that's, that is the ideal way, avoid having to get to that point. Because I, we have no problem going and talking to them, saying, hey, you know, you just start taking care of your, your vehicle.
If it's leaving oil wherever it parks, that's an issue.
Yeah. Or broken window, I mean, shoot, it could have a broken window, or, and especially if it's there all the time. I feel you, Ken, yeah. So, hydraulic fluid from those, uh, things.
So, uh, you know what? Personally. I say let Sean put something generic in there, and if we don't like it, remember, this is going to come back to us before it goes to the council. If we don't like anything, we'll just throw it out.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll probably put something together, I'll, I'll probably look to bring this back to the council in terms of summarizing our conversations, get their input. And then that'll allow us to come back through the process. I don't think there's any glaring things that are going to come up. I think we've, hopefully, we've covered the majority of the, the aspects that we could think of by looking through the ordinances and then getting your guys' feedback. We'll put together kind of a, a generic process and regulatory framework, and then we'll be, get the council's input, and then we'll come back for formal. Ordinance changes.
So, what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
I'm hoping that within, by maybe September, I can bring it to council. I'm, I don't know, actually, I'm, I'm already aug, aug, August. I could probably put something together to, for the second meeting in August to.
I'm not saying to rush, I was just, basically, from your perspective.
I'm thinking it could be back in the commission by mid-September, yeah. Because I think I've got enough information, we've, we have a lot of things, and you guys have concurred with a lot, and then there's easy changes on the documents we've got, so. Then we'll get the council's input, and then we'll go back, then we'll just start the process. So, yeah.
Okay, department reports.
I've done.
Okay, staff announcements.
I've done.
Commissioner and announcements.
Oh, I did have an, actually, I'm sorry, I didn't have an announcement. And of course, I probably lost my sticky note. It was on my phone. Where'd it go? Oh, darn it. Oh, it's right here. Okay, so, as you all know, we, um, we signed a contract, we're involved in the multi-jurisdictional housing element once again. And so, we are going to have a public workshop on October fourth. From six to seven thirty, and so far, it's going to be here in the council chambers. You're more than welcome to show up if you'd like, but it's going to be more of an informal workshop where our consultants will be doing a presentation. We also have a study session, it'll be the joint study session with the council and the commission, and that's on September fifteenth. That's on a, it's on a planning commission night. I think that's, I think I'm right with that, or is that a Thursday night? Okay, so it's on a Thursday night.
And it's a what?
It's a joint workshop, joint study session, uh, it'll be, I think it's going to be six o'clock with the council. It did, I'll, I'll give you guys updated, but keep the dates there, and then. Yeah, for the housing element, yeah. And so, that'll be on nine fifteen. You do? Okay. If you're not there, I mean, it's, I don't know if it's the end of the world. I'll see if there's other dates that might work, if, if someone's not able to make it. But, uh, it's, it's really going to be getting, receiving a presentation, probably similar to what we're going to see at the public workshop, I imagine. I'm going to double-check the time. I haven't confirmed the time. We've just been kind of confirming dates with the consultants. What? Okay.
But isn't that a regular council night, so wouldn't they?
Yeah, they probably want it earlier. What time is your board meeting, Ken?
It starts at five, that is in Hanford.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll update you guys on that date. I know we've been going around, but these are the dates they've kind of set up, but, um. Because I know they're, they're managing, um, twelve other jurisdictions. Trying to manage all these meetings, so. I'll keep you guys updated, though.
So, will we have a meeting in two weeks, do you think, or not?
So far, I don't think so. I've got a project that is going to go to hearing probably on the twenty-third, but I don't anticipate anything on the ninth as of today.
Someone was talking about a gas station coming in, is that true?
I am processing an application right now.
Do we currently have code enforcement?
Yeah.
Going through. Do they focus on the commercial alleys too, as much as the residential or?
I'm not sure. I know Marissa's kind of been overseeing code enforcement since it, since we got the code enforcement officer. So, I'm not sure what the main focus is right now. But if you have any complaints, you, you can always shoot an email and.
Okay. It's, the thrift store there, it's just a junkie running down that alley back there.
That's always a challenge, because it's, it's not necessarily the thrift store, it's everyone drops, that's the hard part.
Midstate would, um, bring a dumpster in once in a while, let them just, um, throw all that stuff in there, that would be a great little.
I'm, I'm not sure on how they're, how they're handling that. I know that she's, I know they have communications with them, but it's just an ongoing battle, I think, in that area.
That's a tough thing.
Yeah.
Everybody just drops the stuff and leaves there.
I know.
Okay, meeting adjourned.